The positions he was talking about. I want to see. Is this, is this, is this mic on? Is it loud? It's not muted? You don't mute it before we start to mute?
It's muted now, but this, this mic is still loud.
Oh, okay. No, but I did, I did want to do that. I mean, I remember sending it in an email. But you raised my attendance, so I just wanted to.
Good evening, everyone. Before we get started with this evening's committee meeting, I wanted to provide you with the format and structure of the board committee meetings. Each committee chairperson will go through their various agenda items, providing a brief explanation and information regarding the item. Cabinet members will be present to provide additional information to the committee chairperson if requested. At the conclusion of committee chairperson's presentations, the audience will have the opportunity for public comment on agenda items only. As this is not a meeting to take action or vote, if there are any questions raised by the audience, that information will be provided during the receivers' meeting the following week. All audience members will be limited to three minutes for public comment on agenda items only. Now, I call to order the board committee meeting for Thursday, July 21st, 2022. We will now have the DCIU report by Chair Fred Green.
Good evening. There will be no report today on the DCIU as my term has just started July 1, but we have a meeting for July. The first meeting will be August the 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next, um, um, chair is Betty McLaren. She will be presenting on people services.
Good evening. Well, there's not a lot to report with regards to, um, special education. With people services, we are, um, I did meet with a group with Ms. Alvarez for Parent University, the Parent University Advisory Committee, which included, um, Ms. Alvarez, Ms. Mosley, Dr. Jackie Irving, Jean Arnold, Carla Beaver, and Judy Ortiz from Harkam, and I lead, and myself as the board member. This organization has created a vision, which is to create a program that will enable, educate, and empower parents, families, and communities to access resources to aid in assisting their children or child in achieving academic proficiency. The goal of this group is to provide parents, guardians with evidence-based knowledge programs, assist with developing the structure of the program to meet the needs of the parents and guardians, develop parent guardian surveys using Survey Monkey, to partner with local colleges and universities to provide workshops, college-bound credited classes. And those universities that we're in partnership with is Harkam, Eastern, Delaware County Community College, Widener, and Newman at this present time. We also plan to host an onsite job fair with current positions posted, non-institutional, on Friday, August 26th. The objectives also include to create a pipeline for employment, to offer soft skills training, to increase the percentage of parents, guardians' participation, to promote collaboration between parents and guardians with teachers, to provide opportunities and supports for parents and guardians to achieve their personal academic goals and to improve their quality of life.
And that would, and... Did I hear you include Chaney in that group?
Chaney was not listed in this report. It does say etc. So I'm sure as they make the connection, they will be a part of it. Of course, they would need to try.
All right, great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Any committee members? No? Okay, thank you, Ms. McLaren. We'll move on then. Um, the next, uh, chair is Joy Taylor, and she will be reporting on technology.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, I'm proud to report that the technology department, IT, has collected all laptops and Chromebooks from all of the students in all of our schools. So we have our equipment. Uh, they are, they are currently in the process of inventorying, inventorying, inventorying them and ensuring that they are swept for any viruses. Software updates are performed, as well as triaged and inventoried for the next upcoming school year. So we have all of that equipment back and ready to go. In addition to that work that's still ongoing, the IT team is also preparing for staff to move into the district's two new buildings.
Yay.
Uh, 1350 Edgemont Ave and 1450 Edgemont Ave. Um, they are currently in the process of, um, ensuring that all the phones are working properly in all of the new buildings so that, um, the phones now, for those of you who don't recall from our last update from IT, the phones now have paging capabilities. So we want to ensure that those phones are operating correctly in each classroom and that if there is an emergency, the classrooms can be paged in a timely manner. So IT is currently working on that, as well as, um, performing any other sweeps in the building to ensure that internet and any other connectivity that needs to be properly installed and/or updated in those buildings to ensure functionality for our students in the upcoming school year. They're also working on that work as well. So IT is very busy. Uh, of course, they're still handling any tickets internally for district personnel who may need assistance with anything. You're more than welcome to always ensure that you email helpdesk@chesteruplandsd.org to ensure that any internal issues that you're dealing with as it relates to technology, software, computers, the list goes on, your phones, that they, uh, receive those tickets and are able to report on them in a timely manner. Madam Chair, that completes my update for the IT committee.
Thank you. I have a question for you. Did, um, does the laptops, do them, does that include hotspots for the children? Or do they not need them?
So the laptops that were released, the laptops and the Chromebooks were released to the students. Uh, those are the equipment that has been returned for triage. As far as the, uh, hotspots go, a lot of students did not receive hotspots. So, um, those that did, of course, those were triaged along with the laptops and the Chromebooks as well. But, um, we're probably going to be shying away from hotspots. Um, we've had a number of issues as it relates to connectivity for them, and we're hoping that in this next school year, uh, we won't have as much of a need for the laptops and Chromebooks to leave the school as we've had in previous school years due to the coronavirus pandemic.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? No? Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to our education, uh, Chair, Ms. Quell.
Good evening. I have, uh, seven different things to report on. Uh, the first one is that there has been, uh, the calendar was put in the school year, the upcoming school year's calendar was put out, but there has been a change to it. And the most positive change that I could see, it didn't, it doesn't affect student attendance, is that we have one additional day added for new staff orientation, one extra day to help people be on board and give them support. Uh, and that day that has been added is, uh, August 16th. The next thing that I'd like to speak to is the memorandum of understanding from the district and the Bureau of Career and Technical Education. We will be using their service because they will be providing free, we like the word free, professional development for VOTEC teachers, as well as the new, um, VOTEC supervisor. So, um, more professional development, the better. The next thing is that, um, I want to report on it is that there will, we are purchasing first, a First Tech Challenge license. And there is a cost with this. It's $588.37. And the purpose of this is to rejuven, it will be used at STEM to rejuvenate the robotics program after school. And then hopefully we'll allow our children to compete in competitions and, uh, hopefully do well. The next one is that the final CSI School Improvement Plan, which is the Comprehensive Support and Intervention Plan. The receiver will be voting on this next week. If you were at the last school board meeting, um, the principals and/or assistant principal did present their comprehensive plans for the upcoming school year, and we expect, uh, that this receiver will vote to accept those plans. Next one, Chester Upland Staff and Professional Planning. We know we need great professional planning. The cost factor here will, there is a cost here, but this is going to allow for up to 200 hours per school for professional planning. So every school in the district will have funds available for up to 200 hours for professional planning. The more professional planning we have, the stronger our outcomes will be. Uh, the next one is science curriculum for middle schools. The, uh, receiver has already approved the science program for elementary schools, and so the next will be the approval for the middle school, grade six through eight. This is, um, I hope I say this right, SAVIS Elevate Program. It's a two-years, two-year license. And it, it, there is a cost of $88,000, but it will be used as ESSER funds to pay for. And of course, to approve, uh, approve the science curriculum for middle schools as well as our elementary. And the final I have, which I think is just wonderful, is that the district will be using Meraki as a wireless access point in all schools. But this will be a five-year licensed commitment with the district. And because we're getting it now, although it's not free, there's a $60,000 discount coming along with this program. We'll be paid with ESSER funds. And the whole purpose of this is to have higher level performance of internet in all our schools in all areas. So you know, uh, like for example, my home, there's certain rooms that I get better reception. This is to level out for all the schools and, uh, better internet connections, classroom, teachers, and all. Madam President, that's my report.
Thank you very much.
If anyone has any questions.
Thank you. A $60,000 discount.
Yes.
How much is it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
A $60,000 discount.
The cost will be $370,000 for a five-year license, and it will be paid out of ESSER two funds.
Thank you.
But yes, the fact that they were able to negotiate this kind of discount, I mean, I'm just loving it.
Thank you, Fred. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, we're going to move right along then. Um, our Chair, Mr. Washington? Uh, he's Chair of Facilities and Transportation?
Do we have Mr. Howard?
Mr. Howard is here. Mr. Howard?
Uh, Mr. Washington, I just got your message. My phone had died the way home, so, um, if I can, I'll provide a brief update on where we are and what we're doing within facilities, if that's okay with, uh, the superintendent, receiver, and board?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, with transportation first, uh, we're working with an outside vendor who is now supporting and managing the transportation and transportation vendor. They're very supportive, and we are making, uh, some changes to maybe do things, uh, for the upcoming school year in addition to continuing to, um, outline our goals and our objectives in the upcoming RFP that we're going to be, um, putting out on the streets, uh, within the next month or two. We just want to make sure that we have everything covered. I've been speaking with the superintendent in reference to some of the changes that will be, um, in the RFP to benefit the school district and not the contractor. So that it's ongoing changes and ongoing improvements with transportation. Uh, with facilities, um, as you noticed, that we have completed finally the construction project and a facade project that was going on around the school with, uh, with all of the construction fence that had covered the whole front entrance on Ninth Street. So as you can see, all of that stuff is down and completed finally. Um, we just had to push a little harder to get this work completed by the vendor. Um, and looking at this point, everything is completed, and, uh, we're paid up with that vendor. There are several things that's going on over the summer. We're using ESSER dollars to, um, provide and support our studio and cleaning staff with cleaning of our school buildings from top to bottom and disinfecting and COVID deep cleaning. Um, so we have a contractor in that's being paid through our ESSER funds that were allocated to do that work, and they're supporting us in cleaning, uh, five of our schools. In addition to that, they also, they also will be supporting us with the 1450 Edgemont Ave building also very soon. Uh, additionally to that, we are working to, um, make repairs for a lot of our school buildings as much as we can. Uh, we're doing some painting work in the high school. Um, and we had a, a pre-bid walkthrough with several paint contractors last week. Uh, they have submitted all their bids, and we are, hopefully, uh, will be approving another vendor next week to paint some 35 to 40 classrooms within the high school, hopefully before school reopens. We're pushing right now with the limited time that we have. Um, they probably will be working on Saturdays and Sundays and maybe one or two shifts. So we're pushing to have that done also. In addition to that, we have our 1350 and also 1450 school buildings. Um, 1450, we are, um, similarly, we had paint lab vendors walk through the building to look at refreshing and repainting the building and also cleaning contractors. So that work is ongoing, and we also will be selecting and awarding, uh, vendors to do that work for us, um, on an annual basis and for this summer to try and repaint the school. And 1350, we're moving right along with some of the work that we have to do there, um, with creating administrative work and also, um, providing, uh, and working with the architect of record right now on designing the remaining portions of the building to become a school building. Um, we are, you know, into construction of administrative portion, and we're roughly about, I would say, 40, 40 to 45% completed to date. Uh, we still have a long way to go, but I'm hoping to have that work completed also by mid-August, um, uh, within the next couple of weeks. So we're working diligently. We're trying to keep up with everything around the district with our small team, but they are working hard and, and, and providing a service to the children we serve at this point. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
No questions. Okay.
Um, so it sounds like, oh, wait a minute. Mr. Howard, it sounds like, um, we should be pretty much ready to go by, um, the start of school?
It is, it is our intentions and our anticipated goals. Um, we hope to have everything ready. Uh, and we're going to be working up to the last day prior to the, the week before teachers come. But we're going to be working diligently to push for all of our buildings to be in much better condition than they were last year. And moving forward, we're hoping to have all of our school buildings refreshed, at least clean, uh, for our kids. Where we can paint, we'll paint. So yes, um, our goal is mid-August. Um, I'm hoping by the 19th or the 20, 21st, that weekend, leading up to the 22nd, that we have at least 95 to 100% of our buildings repaired.
Okay, thank you. No one else have any questions for Mr. Howard? Thank you, Mr. Howard.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so the next, we're going to have our legislative liaison, Ms. Beverly Harris.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm bringing you a report from the State Representative Office on what monies have been, um, a lot of for the Chester Upland School District from Harrisburg. Based on the findings, increased schools in Delaware County are expecting to receive an additional $44.3 million this year, which is an increase of 15.4%. Specifically, school districts in the district of the 159 legislative district are expected to receive the following amount. For basic education fund, they're expected to receive, um, 95, I'm, I'm, 95 million, $611, and 30, I'm not reading it right. Sorry. 95 million?
95 million.
Million, $611,000.
$11,300.
$389. I'm used to reading that such a high amount of money. Not, okay. For special education, uh, $7,568,137. For, uh, physical safety and mental health grants. The amounts are, for physical safety is, uh, $2,001 and $2,001.
$200,000.
$200,001 and 39 cents, and 39 cents. Is that right? Right. Mental health is $2,001.
$201,039.
Thank you. Physical and mental health total?
$400, $402,077.
And funding per student?
$60.
$60. So that is the amount, just the big comp, uh, uh, $60,000, but a comp that's a $44.3 million coming to the district. That's the end of the report.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I'm thinking the $60, there was an additional $60 per student?
It did say this under, what, $40,000 per 60, per student?
I do have a question that I'm not sure your information, it was given to you from the legislature.
Uh-huh.
When they're talking about the, the monies that are coming into the district, is that monies that also has to be divided among the charter schools within the district?
No.
Uh-oh, wow. All right. That's funny, it's coming directly to us.
That's what, alright. That's it, broke down with all Chester Upland.
Great. And you might have said that, I'm sorry. I just kind of got excited about the dollar.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's good news.
Right.
Good news.
Thank you, that's the end of.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, now we'll have the business and ESSER, um...
That's me. I'm, I'm, I'm sitting in for Mr. Riley. So, um, on my screen, you can't see it, but Ms. Mosley, Joanna Mosley's joining us, who's actually on vacation, so, you know.
Does she throw us anyway?
I don't know if I'm going to need her, I don't know if I need the mic up. If I leave anything out, Ms. Mosley, you know, he'll just, you know, pinch hit for me. So I'm just going to give you a high-level presentation on things that we're looking to have, um, approved for next, at the next week's receivers' meeting. Um, item, um, one of the items we're looking for approval for is our T3 media, um, expansion group. Actually, uh, Mr. Johnson, who was behind the cameras, is part of his team. So this is an annual contract with this group. So obviously, hopefully, all of you have been visiting Clipper Television. Uh, we have, um, have restored, resurrected our, our Clipper TV. We're, we're having a lot of important content we're reporting out on. So, um, in order to continue that to happen, we're, we're going to actually, hopefully, the receiver will approve that contract for next year, for, excuse me, next week, for T3. Um, you've heard about Webco. Um, it's a company who's completing work on the repairs on 1350. So Mr. Howard has already spoken to that, but what we'll be doing is seeking approval next week for that work to be paid for. Um, and that organization is Webco, who's doing that. Uh, Webco is also completing the construction workforce, uh, for 1450. Um, so Mr. Howard has spoken to that as well, and will be seeking approval, um, next week from the receiver to have those, um, repairs paid for. We'll also be seeking approval next week for, um, our painting contractor, Winchester High School. One of the things we're trying to do is refresh the building. Um, I don't know if you've all walked around the building lately in the high school, but there's, you know, a lot of rooms where paint is chipping off. Um, some of the areas need to be refreshed, repainted. So next week, we'll, uh, Mr. Howard has spoken to that, but we'll be seeking approval next week from the receiver to have those repairs, um, the painting paid for. And that is it for all that I'll be covering. Ms. Mosley, is there anything that you want to add or anything that needs to be stated?
Um, if I may, Dr. Parkinson, I did just want to speak to, um...
We can hear, there's the mic here that...
Okay, they said, you hear, okay, keep going.
Um, I did just want to speak to the homestead, um, school tax bill because I know, um, some of the board members may have received a few phone calls. We've been receiving a lot of phone calls in the business office as it relates to that. Um, we did reach out to Bruckheimer and also our legal team to just provide an opinion, but several, um, residents have been calling in regards to not paying school taxes, at all in the past. I had a few actually come in and bring their school tax bills from this year and last year. And the issue, it looks like, um, the homestead exclusion amount that was given to residents far exceed what's allowable by the state. According to the state of PA, um, for, if anyone who's approved on homestead is allowed up to a 50% reduction of their, of the median assessed value for your school district. So for Chester Upland School District, the median assessed value is $55,000 and about $500, which means the max credit that anyone could receive is $27,000, um, in a reduction. Um, I saw a few tax bills where people are receiving $45,000 of reduction in which that amount was higher than their property value, which is why they didn't pay school taxes. And that should have never been the case. Um, that also could speak to why Chester was the only, um, municipality where we were short in school taxes. So we did have a couple residents reach out. We were, we reached out to our legal just to confirm. However, um, we have been receiving a lot of issues, and I just wanted to make everyone aware that, um, that, that is, that is the case. There, there is a discrepancy in which people have been receiving as far as the discount on their taxes in the past.
Any questions from the, um, board regarding this? I appreciate the, um, information, Ms. Mosley. Another, another great find, um, by the business office, so, so thank you for that.
Uh, Madam President, may I make a comment? Sure. Specifically to Mrs. Mosley, Ms. Mosley, thank you for, uh, coming in on your vacation and for all the... the great things you're doing in that business office. It's well deserved. Enjoy.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley.
That concludes our business report, Ms. Mosley.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Parkinson. Okay, we've reached the end, so is there any, anyone who would like to have public comment? You may step up to the mic, state your name and your address.
Madam President, your assignment sheet's in the bag as well.
Oh, did they sign? I could just call?
Yes.
Call by name? I'm sorry, I didn't know.
I don't know. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
97.
Okay, Ms. Mosley?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Mosley.
Good evening, Denise Mosley, thanks for the opportunity. I did have a couple questions about agenda items. Ms. Quail, on the software internet, I believe you said the cost was $370,000 with a discount of the $60,000, and I believe you said for five years?
Five-year license, yes.
So is that cost 370,000 for five years, or is the license for five years, and we pay $370,000 every year?
Pay 370,000, and the license is for five years.
Okay, is that 370,000 for five years? One time, thank you. Thank you, Ms. McLaren, for speaking to the parent university. I also wanted to come in person and just make the board aware that we have started this process of inquiry, and we were seeking your support as we continue to try to roll out this program in a way that it will benefit as many families and students as possible. Any other member of the board that may be interested in joining us on the working committee, if you want to make that known, we definitely will include you in any future plan. Do you want me just keep going?
You have three minutes.
On the capital projects, I heard you mention painting and working with IT, but I didn't hear like anything around the air conditioning needs or bathroom updates, and I know that that was a huge concern, I believe, at Toby Farms. And so I would like to know if we have a projected start date on those types of capital repairs as well. And then the last thing that I wanted to speak to was the school tax situation, and also, last month, there was an opportunity for this board to raise taxes, and many of you voted for that not to occur, but we see that we're in a situation where that really would have helped the school district. And so I am asking if there is an opportunity for this board to reconsider our tax situation, especially hearing even the new addition, additional information that people were not properly taxed last year or maybe even before that. If that is something that you can reconsider as a board, it would be a direct benefit to the school district, and I do want to say to Mr. Washington and Ms. Taylor, thank you for your courage to say yes, that's a move that we needed to make because that directly would have benefited the school district. And if we do have an opportunity, Madam President, if that can be reconsidered again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mosley, for your comments. Your comments will be addressed at next week's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Julia Davis? No? Okay. All right, then, that concludes the meeting.
Please see the assignment sheet.
Okay.
Want me to put it here?
Will you sign?
Yeah, sign in and then make your...
All right.
We need everybody to sign in, but if you're gonna make a comment, you can do it when you come up.
Prior to...
Let me...
Moving forward, if you want to speak, you have to sign in prior to the meeting.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
My name is Staff Sergeant Cunningham, United States Marine Corps retired, and the reason why I'm here tonight, because I represent over 262 people from the class of 1976. And what we're starting to see, that we want to make sure that this school board and Dr. Parkinson is on one agenda, and we want to make sure that his staff did the proper support that they need, and we're gonna be diligent in our duties to make sure that happens. The other part is that, at the state of the district presentation that Ms. Mosley gave, and what's your name again?
Dr. Sutton.
Dr. Sutton, it made me cry to know that my children are only reading on the third grade level, and Ms. Mosley found over a million-some dollars just floating around, and nobody kept abreast of what was going on. The other part that I'm asking for at the receivers meeting is that I need a chain of command on all of you. And what I mean by that is that I need to know your appointed duties on this board so we know who to come after. No, I'm just dead serious, because you've heard this thing, a mind is a terrible thing. When we left Chester Upland School District, it was kind of beautiful, but now my classmates are coming back, and we're disheartened. Anytime friends of mine want to give your school $25,000, and nobody calls them back. We gave $5,000 out of our class, and I had to come over here and raise hell to get students vetted to receive that money. It just makes no sense. And I know, I'm just talking rambly right now, but I need to get this off because when I go to the receivers meeting, we're right now, we're just field testing to see what's going on. We want to see that, like Ms. Mosley said, the tax benefit that you denied, it was kind of crazy, because we can only, this school can only function off a tax base. And when we denied them the proper taxes to run this school, now I heard everybody talking about these funds that you're getting from Ness.
Esser.
Esser. Esser is coming down on everything. You know, is that the only source of income that we have for the school district? Besides what the state is granting? We talked about operations. My class was gonna take a picture out in front of the school. They shut us down because they said they were doing reconstruction out front. Your building operation manager should have been on top of this. That school was destroyed for a whole year, and it doesn't take a whole year to do what they did. And we're just seeing this on the outside. You people are here every day. You're on these boards for a reason. And what I'm trying to say is that I want to make sure after this young man and this young lady, they gave their presentations, at that state of the district meetings, we were hurt, and we want to make sure that they get reinforcement on what they need to do. Because like I said, we got 265 people that we can call. We have doctors, lawyers, we have professors over at Wyatt, Joe Argon is one of them, and his daughter teaches at STEM. Now, I'm gonna sit down after I say this. We don't know how our schools got segregated, and they need to come back. You think STEM has a better GPA than this school, and they don't. I found that out for myself. Your schools are filthy. Now, Dr. Parkinson, y'all want to do some renovations on the school, but I propose this. Come with a plan of attack. Make sure we have that budget for the renovation of the school, just don't say we won't get the receiver to pay for it. I need a building operation manager to come in and say this is what we need to do, and you have janitors.
Ten seconds left, Mr. Cunningham.
I'm sorry. We have, I'm gonna sit down, but I don't want to ramble, but we, as the class of 76, we want to make sure that Dr. Parkinson and his staff is taking care of, because they're doing a good job, and we don't want to see this young man caught up in the situation the last principal at this school got caught up in, and he does damn good job. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cunningham. Cheryl Henry?
Yes. And we apologize for not signing then, and you may have never seen me. My children have not been here in 25 years, but they have awesome pride of Chester High. It's called C-Pride, and that's what we're lacking. Y'all are doing an excellent job. That's the sergeant. I'm the person, the nice person. Because you're trying, you're trying, you're really, really trying to get us back on track because a lot of things have failed through the cracks, and a lot of people have hurt us in the long run because they saw dollar signs and not children. Dr. Parkinson, your statement of address last two weeks was awesome. All kinds of good things is coming out. And ma'am, Ms. Taylor, what were, what are we housing in the two new buildings? I'm sorry, I was moving around when you said it. What would be housed in the two new buildings?
So students will be in one. Well, students will be in one for sure, the charter school building. And in terms of facilities and people services and education operations? Yes, that's the old wider partnership charter. In terms of that 1350 building, which is across the street, and I only know it as the Navmar building, that's a whole nother story. I'm not certain specifically what will be, what services will be rendered in that building, but from an IT perspective, what's happening in both of those buildings is outfitting for classroom phones, internet services.
I just didn't know what was in there for space and time.
But I'm sure one of the other members can.
Well, that's all right, for time and space, what can the class of 76, because some of us is retired, what can we do to volunteer to help you, not just talk?
Ma'am, we're, we'll take your questions.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so I want to know about safety. What can we do? And I know when I talk about safety, going into the high school and Shaw and other schools, that we're all, they're always fighting there. There's not enough teachers to be out in the hallway. I just want to know, what can we do as alumni to help you? We are part of the solution. If y'all can just let us know, what can we do? I know you have to have clearances to be able to help aid you, because y'all are doing the technical stuff, the gold stuff. I'm here for the children, because C-Pride, the athletics have it, but the students don't have C-Pride. We had C-Pride. What Chester makes Chester. And we need to go back to the basics, and what are we gonna do about the dress code for students and teachers? You know what I mean? We have to go back to the basics, because most of y'all I know, we all went to the high school, and we had to dress properly. You understand, we had to character. There's no teaching of character in the high, because these young children have young parents, and we have to go back to the basics. And I want to know, will there be some type of teaching of character in all the schools?
There'll be a response, Ms. Henry, to your question next week at the receivers meeting. All right, thank you. Not seeing any, anyone else or hearing? Motion to adjourn this meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.